You to the agenda.
Okay.
You're here, you're gonna, we'll add you to the. Good evening, everyone. The time is six thirty-five, six thirty-six. I call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mayor Citron.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Lindsay.
Present.
Trustee Brooke.
Present.
Trustee Shara.
Present via Zoom.
And trustee Shaw.
Present.
Thank you.
If you could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the public. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, we'll start with the reading of the, of the public notice. As this is a public hearing. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Village Board of the Village of Tuxedo Park, Orange County, New York, on March twentieth, twenty twenty-four, at six thirty P M. Or soon thereafter, as can be heard, at the Village of Tuxedo Park, Village Hall, eighty Laurelard Road, Tuxedo Park, New York, one zero nine eight seven, to consider adoption of a local law about landscapers. Said local law will be made available for review in the Village Clerk's office, eighty Laurelard Road, Tuxedo Park, New York, and may be examined after February twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, by any interested party from nine A M. to four P M., Monday through Friday. And that is by order of the Village Board of the Village of Tuxedo Park, Elizabeth Dougherty, Village Clerk. For anyone's benefit, there is on the last bench, both a copy of the proposed law, as well as a draft of the license application, should the law pass, that the landscapers will fill out. It is merely a draft, it is not a final version, and it will be subject to review by all the trustees, should the law pass, and we will issue a final version sometime in the future. But it's just for your reference, so you understand what would be in such an application. With that being said, we are introducing, for public consideration, a local law that will regulate the actions of landscapers. Very briefly, the purpose of this law is to ensure that landscapers are aware of the provisions of the code that affect their work in the village. There are about half a dozen provisions in the code which prohibit or limit certain types of activities, all of which are contained in the new landscaper law. I want to make it clear that this law is not designed as a revenue enhancer. It is designed to put the landscapers on notice that should they violate any of the code provisions, that their license, which would be issued pursuant to this law, would be subject to suspension or revocation after a hearing before the Board of Trustees. They would be entitled to all the due process that someone is entitled to when they have a license which is put at risk by their own conduct. And they will have every opportunity, should a hearing be held, to present any evidence necessary in their defense. I propose this law because we've heard from the public, we've heard from Chief Conklin, the former chief, that the present system where, at the beginning of the spring season, each landscaper is handed a piece of paper essentially listing the provisions of the code that apply to the work that they do, is insufficient for the purpose of preserving our community and our environment. You have to understand that if a landscaper has a license, and the landscaper is aware if they violate the specific provisions set forth in that license, which are in plain English, that they risk their ability to do business in the village. And that particular system that is proposed under this law, I believe, will allow us to ensure that violations, whatever may be taking place, are less likely to occur, because the loss of a license is economically very damaging to any business. And the landscapers and the tree cutters will, after this law is passed, take great care to ensure that those specific provisions of the code are followed and are not violated in any way, shape, or form. So with that being said, since this is a public hearing, and everybody has had the opportunity to review the proposed law, and I'm sure those of you that are here today and on Zoom have opinions with respect to this law, we will open up the floor to public comment. We will start with people in the room. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this proposed law? Professor Hayes.
Yes, I'm, I have before me a, a letter that was, has been signed by a couple of dozen, or, yes, roughly two dozen people in the park. Some of them have spoken before, but I'd like to read it to the group.
Certainly.
We, the undersigned, support the proposed local law to license landscapers working in our village. Some of us spoke at the February Board of Trustees meeting to this effect, but we would like to reiterate here our reasons for supporting this important initiative. One, build trust and confidence and partnership between residents and landscapers. Implementing a license system will create a framework of trust and confidence between landscapers and residents and village boards. License professionals will be demonstrably accountable, providing residents with peace of mind. Similarly, our village boards will be equipped with a transparent and easily managed method for oversight, thus fostering a collaborative environment in which responsible landscaping practices are encouraged and supported. Two, enforce the exist, existing village code. Our existing code contains many provisions governing landscaping activities. However, effective enforcement remains a challenge. A licensing system would establish a clear pathway to accountability, ensuring that all landscapers operating within Tuxedo Park are familiar with and adhere to these regulations. Three, protect our reservoirs and ecosystem. Tuxedo Lake provides our drinking water. Its attending ecosystems of lakes, feeder streams, and surrounding hills is not only integral to our community's character, but also vital for our well-being. Activities such as blowing leaf debris into the water and unauthorized and excessive tree removal increase soil erosion and stormwater runoff to the detriment of our water quality, riparian buffers, wildlife habitats, and overall environmental health. Ensuring that landscapers understand and observe existing regulations will help in advocating the long-term health of our reservoir and its surrounding ecosystems, preserving its beauty ecological value for generations to come. Four, join peer communities in adopting a successful best practice. Communities such as Village of Southampton, Village of East Hampton, Village of Irvington, and Princeton, to, to name a few, use licensing effectively to ensure the quality of the landscaper contract's work. Protect their homeowners and to enforce their laws. Tuxedo Park will be adopting their tried and tested methods. We hope the trustees will vote tonight or in the near future to pass this much-needed law. And this is signed by Alan Barnett, Christopher Bushiers, Barry Bremen, Pam Bremen, Elizabeth Cottner, Brad Ewing, Enrique Faria, Christopher Gao, Joanne Hansen, Jim Hayes, Nancy Hayes, Julian Hempel, Gardner Hempel, Peter Hempel, Jake Lindsay, Rob McQuilkin, William Russell, Howard Shore, May Shore, Houston Stevens, Dina Stevens, Jason Swirble, and, and Jill Swirble. Thank you.
Thank you, Professor. In my haste to open the meeting, I forgot to make the resolution that allows the meeting to be open, even though your comments are recorded publicly. Be resolved to open the public hearing on introductory law number one of twenty twenty-four, landscapers. I move that this hearing be opened. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by the deputy mayor. All in favor to open the hearing, please say aye.
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 Mr. Brooke?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay. Sorry about that, folks. I took it out of order. Anybody else in the room like to speak on the landscaper law? Ms. Sani, please feel free to take a place at the podium.
I did write a letter. Oh, I should.
I'm not sure that mic works.
Speak into it and let us know. That's the one we. John?
Hello?
There we go.
Yes. Well, I did write a letter to the trustees. And I would, I'm not going to read it. I may touch on some of the points, but I, I then I thought of some other things. First of all, I, I want to say that I think that the, many of the reasons are very noble and for this letter that was just read and authorized by twenty-five people. And I truly believe, before I start with anything else, that we all should do and do do, I've been here for a long time, our very best to preserve and love everything in Tuxedo Park, our land and lake. But I do not think this law is really the answer. I think the responsibility should be, and always is really, with the landowner. And what we need is education. And the landowner hires the landscaper, or the tree person, and tells him what to do and pays him. And this landscaper is usually obliged to do what he's told to do, that he's being paid for. And I think that we should, the, the landowner must understand what the regulations are, and then he passes these on to the landscaper. I'm thinking of a few things. There are people here, I am one of them, who actually puts fertilizer down on my own lawn. I go around with a little thing. I try, I get the fertilizer at Ace Hardware. And I ask them, I say, you know, I want to get something that is right for the environment, and I have to trust them. I would love to know. I would love to have that list and get the right thing and do the right thing. And I'm not going to get a license. But I see that landowners don't really have to anyhow. The other thing is, I think that this law is not really thought out. It, it won't work. It's not practical. The big landscapers, three, four, maybe, will come in once a year and they will get their license. They'll have to spend a couple hours, if they're really going to read it, and write down all their license plates and everything. And they'll do it. And they do it once a year. And I, you don't say anything about a fee, but I don't know if they're gonna, and they're, they pass it on. It's another tax for people. Now, there are many, many people who come in by the day, just the day. And I'm thinking of one, Adilio, who does the trails for the Tuxedo Park trails, and I arrange it. He lives in Spring Valley. Comes at eight in the morning. And he works a really good, long day, and I pay him by the day. He's not, he comes at eight and the village office isn't open till nine. Does he have to get a license? I don't, I think he's gonna, he's very, very busy. I have a hard time getting him. And I think he's gonna say to me, you know, I really can't do that, Mrs. Sani. And it'll, I'll, I'll have very hard, I don't know if he'll come. I know him well enough, so maybe he feels a little loyal. But he's, he's just an example of one person, and I have a couple others. I have a tree person who does not work here regularly. And I hire him for one day, usually one day a year, to clean things up and to take down some dead trees. Well, I'm not sure he's gonna want to come over early and come in and get a license from the Village of Tuxedo Park. I just don't see the point of it. And the policing. Who is gonna go around and, and check on what kind of fertilizer, what's being done? I frankly would rather depend on the professionals I hire than amateurs from Tuxedo Park coming and telling me what to do. And I think maybe other people feel the same way. I also feel that this is putting more work for the office, for Elizabeth. I don't know, does she need more work? Then I, let's see, I did have a few other things in my, in my notes that I wrote to the, to the village. But in general, I just think that the, that, that, this is burdensome. And it is just creating more bureaucracy, more red tape. And I just don't see what good it will do. I really don't. So I, I think that this is something that we should not have, although I do recommend more education for the landowner and for the landscapers. And I, I can see handing them the piece of paper that has the village laws, which say, which are written in kind of legal language. I think that if we are going to pass something out, that it should be simplified. Be it be very direct and simple. And then it might be better understood and followed.
Thank you, Ms. Sani. Thank you very much. Any, any other, Mr. Lynch?
Just a copy of my letter for members of bond. Good afternoon, Ryan Lynch, two seventeen West Lake Road. I have a letter that I'd like to read the trustees. I spoke last meeting on the Board of Architectural Reviews stamping. From my letter, dear trustees, I am writing in against landscaper licensing in its current form. The Board of Architecture Review has expressed agreement that landscapers should not be charged for the privilege of working in the village, nor should they be expected to pay penalties. The Bar advises amending existing village code to have more enforcement mechanisms. In its current form, none of those concerns have been addressed. In my personal opinion, this proposal mirrors the existing village code while adding a tax to homeowners. This does nothing to further the goal set forth of protecting our environment. I echo the garden club sentiment shared last meeting and serve to protect our beautiful community. As chairman of the Bar, I know firsthand that leaving existing village code with no enforcement mechanism leads to disastrous consequences. Well-meaning codes have been written to protect our community's historic architecture. Yet, with no real enforcement mechanism for homeowners unwilling to comply, those codes are only as effective as the homeowner is willing. Most are good neighbors. When they are not, we have ended up with a half dozen air conditioner units desecrating a historic facade. This has cost taxpayers tens of thousands in legal fees while offering no protection. Existing code should not allow this. Our village code explicitly forbids it. Much like this current proposal, there is nothing stopping bad neighbors from disobeying the code. The gate cannot prevent my guests from entering. How might this be enforced? This will only reduce the number of landscapers and pass the cost on to rule-abiding homeowners. It will fail to protect our precious environment. I hope that we can hold ourselves to a higher standard of implementing effective policy. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Anyone else in the room wish to comment on the proposed law? Seeing none, I'll turn to the Zoom members. Anybody on Zoom have a hand raised? Anyone that will, yes. Joanne. Joanne Hansen, please unmute her.
Jim's shared the sentiments, and I was one of those signatories. I would just suggest that this is in fact an enforcement mechanism that can be applied against the landscapers who have an incentive to comply. I've seen the draft of the, it's a one-pager, very straightforward. And it makes quite clear to the landscapers their obligations. And I think this serves as an effective enforcement mechanism.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. Anybody else on Zoom wish to comment? Seeing none, last opportunity, anyone in the room wish to add any comments? Then we'll turn to the board. Deputy Mayor Lindsay, do you have any thoughts on this?
Well, we have it on the agenda. We'll be speaking at that point in time.
We will, we will. Reserve it, reserve?
Yes.
Trustee Brooke?
Discuss it later, we'll discuss it later.
Trustee Shaw?
Yeah, we're gonna discuss later. I got lots of comments, but we'll do it later.
Trustee Shara? You're muted. Unmute him, please.
I was just agreeing with everyone. Let's discuss it later.
Very good.
Later, if I can, just put, I did receive two emails today. One from Michael O'Neil, who's opposed to the landscaper law. Up for a vote this evening. While I cannot be in attendance, please let the minutes reflect my opposition. And Susan Boyle sent an email late today. I am writing to share my thoughts on this law. My husband and I have lived here for twenty years and do not understand why the law is required. We're a small village, and if we legislate this, where does our freedom go to employ who we wish on our own property beyond landscapers in the future? This sets a negative precedent. To me, this is an invasion of privacy as well as an overstretching of the government.
Thank you.
And John, just on Michael's, he simply registered his opposition without explanation?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, that will complete the public hearing, and by motion, be resolved that we close the public hearing on introductory law number one of twenty.
Are you gonna close it before we discuss it? I mean, can't we just continue the public hearing? I don't know how the procedure is for that. I mean, if we close it, then it's over, but if we maybe continue it at least until the end of the meeting, I, procedurally.
Well, we, we don't have any more comments, so we would close it, and then we would, it's an agenda item to, with respect to discussing it. There's no reason to keep it open at this point unless someone should walk in between now and the time we, we discuss it as part of an agenda item.
Well, that's assuming that we're gonna vote on it, right? But what if we keep the open and people have more opportunity to voice their opinion?
Well, if you want to keep it open, we can't discuss passing the law. It has to remain.
I see no reason to keep the meeting open. We can listen to comment. The information is before us. It's a trustee issue, and we can consider it. I need to vote or not vote at that time, so I move we close the public hearing.
So I, I move that we close the public hearing. Second by trustee Brooke? Trustee Brooke?
Yeah.
Second. All right. All in favor of, of closing the public hearing at this time?
Aye.
Okay. Four ayes and one abstention by trustee Shaw. All right, at seven o'clock, so we can move on to the regular business. I don't think we have to do roll call, so we will start with my comments. And following my comments, we will have a swearing-in of the new police chief. Good evening, chief. I'm, if you'll indulge me, I'm going to move the flags in front of the, in front of the desk so we can have an appropriate swearing-in ceremony, but we'll do that after my comments. Oh, is Ms. Swirble here? Yes, Ms. Swirble. You're on, you're on Zoom. Will you be coming in to take some photos? Let her, open her up.
Hi, this is her husband. She, she'll be there in like twenty seconds.
That's fine, thank you. Anyway, thank you. Good evening. I'm, I'm going to keep my comments brief. We have a law agenda item. But I wanted to update the community on three specific items. The first one is the budget. The Budget Director and Deputy Mayor Lindsay, together with trustee Shaw, have been working very, very hard on the budget for twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. And we will have a proposed budget to submit to the community very, very shortly. We're on schedule to do that. I have a meeting on Friday at the Tuxedo Union Free School District that I'd like to tell you about very briefly. The superintendent has invited me, together with other community leaders.
Mom's just down taking a photo.
Sorry?
Jay, you're on, you need to go on mute. There you go.
The, the school superintendent, Jeffrey White, has invited me and Deputy Mayor Lindsay to come to a meeting on Friday, the first of what I assume will be many meetings, to discuss the future of the Tuxedo Union Free School District. I believe the su, the superintendent has some plans to build a new elementary school to accommodate the students he expects are coming in, will be joining the school district once Tuxedo Reserve is completed. And I'm sure there are going to be other plans. And I'm going to that meeting together with the deputy mayor, because I want to be able to keep you advised, as members of the village, as to what types of programs and plans the school district has. As you all know, the largest portion of our tax payments as individual homeowners go to the school district. And I think it's important that we remain involved and voice our opinions with respect to what actions the school district chooses to take to either accommodate a larger student body or to build new buildings or to tear down old buildings that they believe are no longer useful. So I intend to report back to you on any developments that take place during this meeting or any subsequent meeting, so you can, you can be aware of what's going on in the school district. The last item is that it seemed like spring was here until the snow started to fall last night and this afternoon. But in any event, I wanted you all to know that the Weewaw Beach Request for Proposals for a beach management company went out several weeks ago. Chairman Tenari has a number of possible management companies. He sent them copies of the request for proposal. The request for proposal was also published publicly, and we're looking forward to getting more than one proposal for a management company to run the, the beach this summer. And by the time we have our April meeting, we should have all those proposals in hand. And then the board will discuss them publicly and pick the best company to run the, the beach. Alternatively, if none of the proposals are acceptable, we are also exploring the possibility, as I mentioned earlier, of self-management. And in that regard, I'm working with the Town Recreation Director Kathleen Metcalf to look for what is known as a W S I, or Water Safety Instructor, who would be hired both by the village as well as the town to operate the beach. The Water Safety Instructor would work with the town camp in the morning and then would work for the village in the afternoon. That is the second possibility if we don't have any solid proposals from any beach management company. But as we approach this, we approach this with two prongs, and we'll make a decision shortly. And that will, decision will be made publicly, probably by the April Board of Trustees meeting, when it will be debated by all the trustees. So that concludes my announcements. Now, if you just indulge me, I'm going to move the flags to the front of the table. Our professional photographer is here, and we'll do a, a swearing-in of our chief. Okay, that'd be great.
Oh, sorry, my stuff is there.
Yep. She goes on. She goes on. Hey, chief, do you know whether the flag goes on the left or on the right?
Can I just say something? My, my understanding was that the flag goes on the left as well.
All right, let's, let's. The flag is on the left, Madam Clerk?
That's what my understanding is, yes.
That's right, on the observer's left.
Does this seem about right? Okay.
That's right.
Come up, I'd like to introduce to the members, to the residents here, as well as the residents who are joining us on Zoom, our new police chief, Alan Faust, who began work on February twenty-fifth and was officially sworn in at that time and his beautiful wife, please come up. And our judge, Ronwyn Roundtree, who will administer the oath. I do somewhere, yes. I'll get the book.
Something about the full of the Constitution.
Do you have a Bible?
I do, I brought one.
Okay, great. Alan M. Faust. Okay, would you be so kind as to hold the Bible for your husband?
And then repeat after, after me. I, Alan M. Faust.
I, Alan M. Faust.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of police chief.
The duties of police chief.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Great, thank you. All right, the trustee, the trustee would join us for a photo? Thank you very much, Bill. Okay. Thank you, folks, for indulging us on this. We'll put the flags back now.
Thank you for all the support.
You'll stick around to give your. Thank you, Judge. Okay. I'll get back into place. Now, we had public comment as part of the public hearing, but now it's time for public comment generally. And as I tell everyone, there's two public comment sessions. Three minutes at the beginning and if you choose to stay, three minutes at the end. And you may discuss any subject you believe is relevant to the Board of Trustees. You're not limited to agenda items. So is there anyone in the room who would like to give public comment at this point? Judge Roundtree?
I'm not sure if this is a trustee's issue, but in case it is, I will raise it because I've been meeting.
Certainly.
Which is the trail that is at Ringwood Avenue, the Ringwood Avenue Trails. The beginning part of it is very muddy and gets torn up by the ATVs that go through. So I don't know if this is a trail committee's issue or if there's any way that at least some portion of that could be made more passable. As it is, I go through the mud, which is fine, but it's hard with little kids unless you want them to be three inches deep in mud. So that is just a comment. Take it as you will.
I, I appreciate that comment because actually Sally Sani, who was, who's unfortunately left after the public hearing, is the chair of the Trails Committee and I've had discussions with her. Not with respect to the, that trail, but with respect to the Cliff Trail, there were, there were several trees that came down blocking the trail. And I learned in my discussions with her that she actually has funds that are utilized for the purpose of improving the trails. And what I will do is I will speak to her about that portion of the Bridgewich, was it? Ringwood Avenue Trail that perhaps she can see that more mulch is laid down or in some way the beginning of that trail is improved so your kids don't get all muddy as they walk through it. But thank you for bringing it to my attention. Also, while we're discussing trails, if anybody is walking on trails and finds what they believe is either a dangerous condition or a condition that needs to be remediated, please let me know and I will forward that information to Ms. Sani. With respect to downed trees, we actually had the DPW remove the two downed trees on the Cliff Trail because Ms. Sani was not available. She was in the city. So if there's an issue to be taken care of, if she doesn't take care of it, I'll see that the DPW does so that the people, the residents can enjoy the trails. So please, please feel free to contact me at Village Hall and we'll address your concerns. Thank you, Judge.
Just, just so you know, that trail, there is a fence on the trail in the park. That is the Dow, Dow put up a fence so the ATVs can't go into the park. As you go out to Ringwood, you actually leave the park and I don't, I don't know where the butt is, but so, so the best thing is rather than mulch is if the DPW gets involved, put in some big rocks. Just put in big rocks so you can't do an ATV, but technically the the bulk of the parkland is protected from that because of the fence that was put up by the Dows.
Any other public comment on any issues from any members of the public at this time? Here in the room. Seeing none, are there any, any persons on Zoom that wish to make any public comment at this point in time? All right, there's always the ability to speak if you wish to remain to the end of the meeting. A second opportunity to make public comment. And now turn to the trustees for their comments. Deputy Mayor Lindsay, anything you'd like to discuss?
Well, later on, we have a, a agenda item to discuss community choice aggregation, which is part of our clean, our Climate Smart and Clean Energy Program. So I'll talk more about that at that point in time. But before the next meeting in April, Jim Hayes and I will prepare a list of actionable items that, for the town board to consider to further our efforts for Climate Smart and Clean Energy.
Thank you. Professor Hayes will be giving a, a brief introduction to the issue of Climate Smart. It is not on the agenda, but I, I've, I've take, used my discretion to add it. He's here and prepared to speak today, but that will be under new.
It won't take long.
It will be under new business and we'll give you the opportunity, professor. Trustee Brooke, any, any?
No comment.
Trustee Shaw? Trustee Sherer, any comments you wish to make at this point?
Not, not from me. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so that being done, we now move on to the reports. We have reports that were filed October to February by Associate Justice Roundtree and the February Report of Justice Hassan, they are available online. And I now would ask our police chief, Alan Faust, would you please come, come up and give us your report for the month? You can either do it in front of us or do it at the mic.
All right, first of all, I want to thank again, thank the board for giving me this opportunity and putting your trust and faith into me. I assure you that I'll give it a hundred percent and I won't disappoint any of yous. Looks like the village PD, they had a hundred and seventy-two blotters for February with four criminal cases. They also had two arrests, one being harassment and one was a mental health arrest. They issued one traffic citation and numerous warnings. They also had five alarms, two medical calls, five fire alarms. And it's pretty good to show that the guys are out there, they troll twenty-six-hundred-and-sixty miles for the month. So the guys are definitely getting around the community and it's pretty good. Looks like the amount of vehicles for a short month that went through the gate were approximately six-hundred-and-thirty per day. Pretty amazing. Again, definitely I look forward to this opportunity and whatever you need, I'm always available. If you'd like to contact me and I'll give it a hundred percent and I think everybody will be very happy with the job that I do. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Chief. We appreciate all you, all the work you put in over the last month. Next would be the DPW supervisor Jeff Boss. What have you got for us this, this month yet?
We've spent a lot of time cleaning up trees and branches and debris from the high wind a week and a half ago. We removed and cut down a lot of trees down at the racetrack area. At the racetrack, we filled in that elephant pit, that huge elephant pit they call it down there. We, we put in a precast manhole for access. So we don't have that dangerous situation anymore of that, of that huge hole there. We also did some repairs, the police station, a couple of doors needed fixing and one window that Dan repaired. We installed the new mirror at the S-turns.
I saw that, yeah.
We just got it the other day. Cleaned roads, triangle, village office sewer plant and the beach club of debris after the winds. We had to repair one of the roofs at the, one of the sewer plant buildings, some shingles got blown off during that wind also. And we did a lot of cleanups from plowing operations over the winter where, where you push things up on the triangles and stuff. We picked up broken blacktop and cleaned all that up. Patched potholes with a, with winter mixed asphalt. We repaired a water line on a coma road, a two-inch line. We also installed a new valve on it because we had trouble getting on the valve that controls that line, so we put a new valve in over there. Repaired a leak in chlorine line at the sewer plant. Worked with the leak detection company to pinpoint that leak on the coma road. We responded to Serpentine Road for a broken water pipe in, in twenty-nine Serpentine Road in the house. We turned it off by the meter. John is currently doing the first quarter of meter readings now. I'm sure there'll be a few that are gonna need to be repaired when he gets done. We also, Dan built a cedar handrail down at the racetrack. On the north end of the racetrack, there's some steps that go down. Built a nice cedar rail and installed it today. That's about it.
I do have a question. Trustee Shaw mentioned, she suggested that we invest in a leak monitoring system, portable one, where we can make a determination where we're losing water. Is, is that something that, that you've considered in the past? Because my understanding is we do lose a lot of water as the, the flow goes through the system. And is there a way for us to set up a mobile leak detection system? Monitors or meters at various locations. I discussed it with John as well that we'd be able to find out where this water is going.
Well, we have discussed it in the past. John knows with the, the sensors.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there, there are ways to do it.
Right. And the reason, the reason I ask is because later on in the agenda, we're gonna talk about setting up a capital planning committee with a, which will be assigned the responsibility of coming up with essentially a five-year plan for every department, including yours, in consultation with you and, and the other department heads. So one of the things, of course, is water. It's, it's a ma, it's a major issue for us. So you've discussed this with John and it's something that we should, is it something that you believe we should consider?
It's been discussed with the board also.
Yeah.
I mean, there were prices gotten, I believe, for, for those systems and.
And it's like one system can be moved around the village to try to find out where the, where the leaks are taking place?
Well, there, there's, there's two ways. It's been talked about buying meters and actually putting meters in and moving them around, which to me doesn't make sense. It's a lot, it's labor intensive. It's not an easy thing to do. But those sensor things that you put in the valve boxes makes more sense. So it is something to discuss in the future.
Any questions from the board for the DPW superintendent?
No.
Okay, thank you so much. Turning now to the Building Department, Building and Land Use Officer and Advisor to the Board, John Ledwith.
Glad to report that all the major projects going on, on Tower Hill Road and East Lake Road and Lookout Stable Road are all going very well with the improvement in the weather in the last month or so. You know, projects are still moving pretty quickly forward, which is nice to see. We've had a couple of new building permits pulled for kitchen and interior renovations. Building from an application for a heat pump system and a generator at seventeen Weewaw Road. We've been in touch with ONR regarding some minor outstanding issues regarding guy wires and lights. ONR is fairly attentive to these items. Got a lot of calls regarding seventy-two Lookout Road where there are some violations. People interested in purchasing the property, so I've tried to inform them of what the hurdles will be in order to get a C of O for that property. Also been in touch with the property management company for a property on Circuit Road which has been kind of left abandoned for some time. I don't think there's any major issues there, but whoever purchases the property does have some things that have to be completed based upon some bar approvals years ago and the fact that the property hasn't been lived in, you know, for probably several years at this point. Let's see here, working with the village attorney regarding some drainage issues up on Stable Road. We've been getting prices for the police department. And also getting pricing for replacing the heating system at the South Gate House. And that's a pretty good summary of what's happening.
Thank you. Any questions from the board for John? Josh, any questions from you?
No.
Okay, thank you. The Water Department reports are attached to the record. Now turn to our village clerk for the treasurer's report.
They're, they're also attached. I, I have no further comment unless people have questions.
All right, thank you very much. That completes the reports. I make a motion be resolved that the board add all written reports to the permanent record. Do I have a second? Second by trustee Brooke, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, unanimous five-zero.
So I have a little question. When you say that you're going to add it to the record, does that include the treasurers as submitted or with the audit of claims?
Yeah, well, no, the audit of claims is gonna come later, but it comes separately.
Okay.
It's at the end of the. It's at the end of the, the agenda. Okay. Thanks. All right. Now we have a whole bunch of minutes that were prepared by the, by the Clerk Treasurer. January 24th, regular meeting, February 20th, Board of Assessment Review Meeting. February 21st, our regular board meeting, March 12th, our special meeting and March 13th, our bid opening. Has everyone had a chance to review those minutes? Anybody? Yep. Okay. I make a motion that we, we approve the, the minutes that I just listed, A through E. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Minutes?
Oh, okay. Then we'll withdraw the vote and please feel free to discuss the issue of the minutes. And please let us know which one you're referring to.
Well, I'm actually referring to one that's not listed. That's the January minutes that you did not approve at the last meeting because I had not reviewed them.
Oh, January 21st?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's the first one on the list.
Oh, not on my, not on my.
I'm, I'm sorry that, um, I forgot to put it on the agenda and it was only when I was trying to, you know, after the, I made the agenda, I realized I forgot to put that on there and it had been tabled from February. So I apologize for the confusion there.
Okay. Well, we will, we will add it to the agenda, January 21st, 2024. And Trustee Shaw, the floor is yours on that.
No, I'm fine with, with that. I reviewed the agenda and I just wanted to, so everybody.
All right. So again, there are five, there are five separate minutes, January 21st, February 20th, February 21st, March 12th, the March 13th, that I mentioned earlier. Again, I'd move that we approve those minutes as stated. Do I have a second?
I still have another comment.
Okay.
Because the March 12th special meeting on the foil was all, it had a huge preamble and not just a resolution. I think at least it should be accurate. If you're going to do a preamble, it should be accurate with what was reflected in the meeting. And what I suggested when it was brought up is I suggested that the mayor, as the foil representative, submit whatever foil request has come before him to the rest of the board members, which you agreed with. And then when it was time to pass the resolution, I asked, well, why isn't that part of the resolution that the mayor then reports to the board? And you said it's not necessary because it's not in my character and I would never do that. I still think it should be part of the resolution. And I don't see why it wouldn't be because it's, if that's, if it's, it was resolved that, and you agreed to inform the board, I think it should be part of the resolution.
I, I respectfully disagree. I said that I would consult with all the members of the board should there be a foil appeal. I don't believe it's necessary to include that language in the resolution. I stated my position at the meeting. I offered to be the foil appeal officer. If someone else would like to be the foil appeal officer in my place and steed, that's fine too. I don't, I have enough responsibility as mayor and I'd be happy to allow one of the trustees to take that. So with respect to the minutes, which is all we're approving here and now, I believe the minutes are accurate and I would move the question. And you are free, of course, to either abstain or vote no on the motion. So the motion is moved, seconded by the Deputy Mayor.
But can you also, I have a third question. What is the bid opening, March 13th? What was that for? That meeting of bid opening?
I, I'm sorry to interrupt. I, I honestly wasn't, I've never done anything like this before. I wasn't exactly sure how, what the procedure is. But we had a bid for the, the diver harvesting services for the lakes. We had a request for proposals. We did get one bid. And just looking at what has been done in the past, I opened it up with John present so that he could observe it. And I noted that in some minutes and I, I don't know if that's something that should come before the Board of Trustees or not. I'm not sure.
I just didn't know where it was.
We're going to, we're going to vote to approve or disapprove that foil, I'm sorry, that, that bid as part of the, an agenda item. So we will, we'll reach that particular item later on in, in the meeting. So with respect to that, again, I move, I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Trustee Scherer?
Aye.
Trustee Shaw?
No, because I don't think that it reflects March 12th.
Four to, four to one. Okay. Now, we'll move on to old business. As I discussed at the February meeting, I was going to be raising two issues, quality of life issues. And one of them was the issue of unattended dogs in public areas. And as part of the discussion, in my message at the end of February, early March, I posed a question. I actually posed two questions and requested answers from the residents with respect to unattended dogs and also Sunday deliveries. And I would like to report at this point in time to the board and to the public, the responses that I received. I would note that the responses were all emailed, that I shared all the responses with the Board of Trustees. So every member of the board has seen what the residents' opinions were individually. And now I would like to report to the public what the results of this completely unscientific survey was. But still, to the extent that the number, the numbers speak for themselves. So on the issue of should unattended dogs be permitted in Tuxedo Park? First, let me read from the Village Code with respect to unattended dogs. This is section 32.3. It's captioned Dogs at Large. Subdivision A, Dogs are permitted to run free within the village provided that, subsection one, no more than two dogs owned by or in the custody of one family shall be permitted loose off the property of their owners at any given time. Two, each dog allowed to run free is known to be non-vicious and rabies-free. Three, the owner assumes full responsibility for his dog's safety and actions on public and private property. And four, there is no outstanding prohibition from any village board or official. That's the code as, as it exists now. And with respect to my personal opinion, I'm concerned about unattended dogs in the village. And this is the response I received to my question. Thirty-one residents responded by saying they do not want to allow unattended dogs. Nine responded by saying they wanted to allow all unattended dogs. Four gave responses which one could describe as mixed, and I'll, I'll list them. Enforce existing laws. There are no bad dogs in Tuxedo Park. Enforce existing laws. And then there was the issue of conflating unleashed dogs with unattended dogs. And let me set the record straight on that. I walk my dog off leash. I think it's great. I think everyone that has a dog should be able to walk their dog off leash. This is not about a leash law. What this is about is allowing your dog to leave your property and wander freely through the village without any supervision at all. And there is a distinct difference between walking your dog off leash and letting your dog wander free throughout the village. And I want to make it clear, and I had to, to certain residents to let them know, I am in no way proposing a leash law for this community. But there is a difference between walking your dog off leash and allowing your dog to wander wherever he or she wants to go. So with that being said, it appears that by a large percentage, most people that responded to this, again, admittedly unscientific survey, do not want to allow unattended dogs. Which leads me to the conclusion that, and I intend to propose legislation at the next Board of Trustees meeting to amend the section of the law that I just read to you. I'll now open it to the members of the board for any thoughts they may have on this particular subject.
Well, it, you'll propose it as a change to the law. So we'll have a more formal public hearing.
It will have to be a public hearing. It's an amendment to the code. Absolutely.
And so I, you know, I look forward to that because then people know, okay, it's a public hearing. I really have to get my opinion registered. Would you like my personal opinion?
If you want to give it, you don't have to. It's your opportunity.
Okay. Well, I, I personally agree with the majority that think it is not safe to have dogs roaming free, unattended.
Trustee Brooke?
I, I think there is no evidence that the current policy has endangered anyone. Number two, I generally believe that we're a small community. If a dog is found to be running loose, one can always find the owner and explain to that to them. There's no rea, reason to create rules when there are no problems to be dealt with. So I believe the existing rules are adequate. And we should just leave it, you know, I would recommend we vote down any change in the leash law and move on with the meeting.
Well, that's, it's, I appreciate the fact that you want to move on with the meeting.
No, no, I understand. I've been giving my vote.
People are entitled to express, board members are entitled to express their opinion. So Trustee, Trustee Shaw?
I agree with Trustee Brooke. I think there's no need. And I think there were several comments, but that came in by email where the residents said that you should have a personal discussion with the owner of the dog. And I'd like to know how many dogs are running around, like we're not like a third world country where they're all running around. So.
How do you have a personal discussion with an unattended dog if you don't know who the owner is?
Well, I think everybody knows who, who we're talking about.
I think you're making an assumption that's not fair.
Well, so who, who, how many complaints and how many different dogs?
He's giving you her opinion.
Yeah.
That's fine. But my, my, that's my response. Trustee Scherer, do you have anything you'd like to add to this? We'll obviously discuss it in greater detail at a public hearing once legisla, I put legislation on the table. Oh, you gotta unmute him. Sorry.
I was just saying, hopefully you know me by now. I'm open-minded on every issue. So I look forward to the discussion and the debate. I agree with Trustee Lindsay that will, you know, when crunch time arrives, I'm sure we'll have more input, maybe more balanced input, who knows? But I will say my perspective at this moment in time is if it's not broken, don't try and fix it. And as far as I'm aware, and obviously I read all of the, the input from the public. I, I just, I think the, the current rules are, are sufficient. And that's where I am right now. But I'm, like I said, open-minded and willing to be persuaded otherwise. So look forward to the conversation.
Okay. Thank you. Now we'll move on to the next item, which is discussion of allowing Sunday deliveries. I'd like to report to the public that we received 26 yes responses, Sunday deliveries should be permitted. 12 no responses, that Sunday deliveries are not appropriate and should not be allowed. And two, no with exceptions for various, I guess, contingencies or emergencies. I personally believe that Sunday deliveries should be permitted. There's a, each trustee and the deputy mayor have their own opinion and I'll give them the opportunity to do this. This, this change, if I do propose it, it's not a code change, but would be by resolution. However, it's not something I'm going to do tonight. And if I make the, if I, if I put it on the agenda for next month, hopefully we'll get more input and allow people to comment on it because it seems to be an important issue for a lot of people on both sides. Deputy Mayor Lindsay, how do you feel about Sunday deliveries?
Well, the, it, it only requires a resolution, correct?
Yes.
Not a public hearing. But where is it currently codified? I mean, how was it?
Apparently there was a resolution by a prior board prohibiting Sunday deliveries. I, I'm not sure. I'll look for the resolution. I don't know how far back it was. Trustee Shaw, Trustee Brooke, do you have any recollection of passing such a resolution while you were on the board?
I have no such recollection, but whether it pre-exists, I mean, we can sort of make a resolution now.
Yeah.
And
Well, I, the reason why I ask is, I mean, I remember when we first moved here 29 years ago, you couldn't have deliveries on Saturday either. And I don't know where that was. I, I think it requires a little bit more investigating into how we got to the prohibition of deliveries on Sunday, right? And how it became allowed on Saturday, you know, and what was changed? Like what was the basis?
The world does change.
Well, first of all, I've, I've been here for 40 years and I don't remember any prohibition on Saturday deliveries.
Yeah, I do. I don't know if anybody else who's.
The second thing is, these deliveries include medicine.
I don't remember.
Right?
Yeah.
I mean, it's just, you know, so you know, from my perspective is a lot of the deliveries are, are important for people. As the community has changed, more people work Sunday deliveries. If they are difficult, if one person is getting too many deliveries, again, small community, you talk to the person and you get them to change their delivery schedule if you want. I stress the fact that government is, just because we can make a rule, as Josh said, if it ain't broke, why fix it? I think it's, you know, there are deliveries occasionally on Sunday because somebody gets in. I don't think they're disruptive particularly.
So you're saying it is broken, we need to fix it?
No, no, I'm saying.
Because if there is a prohibition.
There are occasionally deliveries. It may be medicine. It may be an emergency.
There are food deliveries.
There are food deliveries.
Food deliveries are permitted on Sunday.
So the answer is from my perspective, we should allow Sunday deliveries. And, you know, let's poll everybody and go from there.
Okay.
So I may, I just one more question. Are we going to, are you going to propose a resolution tonight?
No.
Okay.
That'll be next month.
Well, I, I, then I'll just say that I totally agree with the respondents who, who talk about the peace and tranquility of being able to take a nice walk on a Sunday in, on roads that have no sidewalks and not have to worry about delivery trucks who are rushing around to meet their quota of deliveries. And so I think it's, it's, I agree with all the people who cherish the one day of being able to walk around the park peacefully and not have to worry about trucks.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Trustee Shaw?
I agree with Trustee Lindsay. And I think if it is, you know, if you open it up, then you're going to have Amazon deliveries on Sunday. And I think, I mean, we have done this in the past where, you know, certain deliveries, whatever, some big delivery, furniture delivery or something, they could only come on a Sunday in a small truck that you call in advance and you say this is the only day that it could happen and you talk to the police and that's what you do. I don't think, I mean, I think it's fine. You get the food deliveries, but Amazon and all that stuff, I, I don't think you need.
Thank you. Trustee Scherer?
I'd be in favor of Sunday deliveries.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll, we'll address that issue by resolution next month. And if anyone out there who has not responded to my questions has an opinion, please mail it to me and at mcitron@tuxedopark-newyork.gov and I will distribute it to the trustees so that everyone has an opportunity on the board to see what you have to say. Thank you very much. All right. We'll move on to the next item, discussion of traffic safety proposals. Several months ago, I mentioned that I was in favor of reducing the speed limit from 30 to 25 miles an hour, but only if a traffic safety study indicated that it would be an appropriate thing to do. Also, as part of the, of the requests from various engineering firms to provide us with the proposal, I felt it was important to address the safety of certain roadways in the village. Three of those roadways are Antio, Laurel and West Lake Road, south of Turtle Mountain Road. We approached five engineering firms. Three of them showed an interest. Initially, one dropped out. Three of them showed an interest. Initially, one dropped out, and we were left with two proposals, both of which are on the website as attachments to the agenda. But with respect to those proposals, they're almost apples and oranges because only one of the proposals uh where the proposed price was about seventeen thousand five hundred dollars to do the study included evaluating the safety of the three roads I mentioned. The other proposal from another firm was not going to include a safety study of those three roads. It was actually more money than the first proposal. So I think what we're going to have to do is we're going to have to do an RFP. Uh we can't simply select one over another because the amount of money involved exceeds the the limit for which we're entitled to just move forward with a specific vendor. But I just wanted you to know that we are working on it. I'll get an RFP out and we'll see how many different proposals we get, but I think it's important. I think it's not only important to to consider whether in with our roads, as narrow as they are, with no shoulders and curves and turns, whether twenty five as a village-wide speed limit is an appropriate change. Um and also, again, those three roads, Antio has very steep drop offs. Laurel has a hairpin turn and very steep drop offs. And Westlake, while it's not steep, it has a lot of curves. It gets narrows it narrow at certain points. And there's always the possibility, even with those boulders, and those boulders are not exactly spaced right next to each other. God forbid, somebody could end up in the lake. And we have to consider the possibility of guide rails, but we need a professional engineering expert to tell us that. And that will be part of, as I will mention later on, a capital planning committee's um job to decide what type of road surfaces we need, whether we need guardrails in lieu of boulders, and we will discuss that when that item comes up. But I just wanted to give you an update on that. We we
I'll make one comment because it's going to come before the board to approve this. You know, you never strikes me, you don't want to create rules for the bulk of roads in a community based on a couple of small roads.
Yep.
Right? There's also not a problem. There haven't been, you know, there are occasional accidents, but by and large, you know, you know, deputy mayor Lindsay mentioned her daughter got a speeding ticket for going thirty nine miles an hour along the causeway. You know, the answer is, the bulk of the roads here can establish a thirty mile speed limit. There's no reason to create more enforcement problems for the police. If you want to put up signs saying slow, or you want bumps in the road, you can do anything you want in those things. But I personally am against spending seventeen thousand dollars or twenty thousand studying something which is not a significant problem. So when the issue comes, shall we vote for spending twenty grand to study the roads? I'm going to be against that because I don't think it makes any sense. I think thirty is fine. It's been there for years. At one point, they put up road signs that had a lower speed limit just because, why not? Right? It was
Couple of areas that the chief conklin, yeah, yeah.
Perfectly okay to do, but but, you know, I'm not, I I, you know, I don't believe creating rules for the sake of additional rules makes a lot of sense because we don't have a big problem.
How do you feel about studying those three roads I mentioned and the safety on those those particular roads? Do you have the same opinion? Or or are you open to considering a traffic study and a safety study on Antio, Laurel, and Wesley?
Uh, you know, show me the bit, you know, but but it strikes me, you're talking about three roads in in, I don't know, how many miles of roads do we have?
Twenty five.
Forty four, twenty five miles a road. You've got a couple of different places and use it with signs, but you don't have to go go through the exercise of creating a bunch of new laws. So I'm going to, it's a small community. We should be able to, we have to enforce something. You can put in some speed bumps. And that'll work just as well, in fact, better than anything else.
Uh you'll have an opportunity. I know you're the bar chair and you probably have an
Has nothing to do with that, I promise. It's helpful, dear discussion, and yeah. I live on that section of West Lake River.
Okay.
Walk it and drive it almost daily. There are two existing signs.
I'm I'm sorry, it's very hard to hear Ryan. Maybe he could go to the mic. Is that okay? Oh, sorry.
I don't know why you're apologizing.
I feel like I interrupted.
Thank you.
The um the those signs, I I'd have to take a look. I mean, if they're yellow.
Recommended, those are recommended.
If they're yellow, it's they're non-enforceable. They're just recommended.
Yeah, so that, uh Mr. Pop, I'll I'll let I'll I'll let you speak on this, even though
It would be much easier for the the clerk to hear you if you
I'm closer to.
Or either, yeah, I don't know. Is that working better now?
Yeah.
It's perfectly happy, but since Ryan spoke that, it's true. Let me say something about Antio. I I read the proposed study. And, you know, and just I have to be honest, I agree with Paul. It seems crazy. I mean, it it's obvious what's wrong with it. It's obvious that there is a very steep uh drop off and there are gaps in a prior um answer to that question, which was the placement of boulders. So all I had asked for some months ago was um filling those gaps, if at all possible, to fill those gaps. Um and then I was just thinking as I drive past that beautiful fence on on guardrails on Tuxedo Road, what the history of that was and why can't we have that consistently uh in ex- in areas that need, in roads that are, again, obvious. Turtle Point Road is obviously an accident waiting to happen. It's not for, you know, experienced, you know, people who know the roads and all that. But teenagers go quickly and and people have gone into the lake over the years. I remember there have been fatal accidents on that road.
Did you say Turtle Point or West?
Yeah.
Turtle or Westlake?
Westlake, yeah. That whole extension.
Yeah.
Good luck in in managing teenager student, whatever they do. What am I, what am I keep going?
All right, thank you, Mr. Pop. Uh deputy mayor, did you?
I was just gonna add, since Mr. Pomp uh was asking about the history, uh I was on the Village Improvement Advisory Committee that we worked and and brought in contractors and installed that uh guardrail probably twelve years ago, or maybe even more.
It was when Houston was trustee.
Yeah, yeah.
There were, there were
So
There were old guardrails.
Around two thousand nine ten.
So
So, yeah. The old guardrail were were sections of leftover pipes and and precast.
Three posts we made at the D W and then metal post.
Right.
Yeah.
And sort of looked like the one by your house also.
Parts of, thank you.
Okay, well, this this this
I have comments.
Yes, I'm sorry. I lose track of who's speaking, but I apologize.
Um I agree with trustee Brooke. I don't think we need to change the whole village because of three roads. Um we know what the issues are, and you can either do speed bumps or what I find very effective are those blinking lights that you're going over twenty five miles when you pull into the town of Tuxedo. I think that stops you. Like, you see that, the limit is X, and you're going that, and that's it. That's it. And I like trustee Brooke. I would vote against spending any money for traffic safety.
Trustee Sher.
Um, yep, um, I was just asking someone in the room who was making noise to pause for a second. My view on this is um pretty much what Tinka just summarized, which is, we know where the issues are. I think you identified the three roads. We know what the solutions are, right, which is putting in barriers of some type. Um it would be great to make them aesthetically pleasing, but as permanent as possible. Uh I'm a big fan of do it once, do it right, and have it be there a hundred years from now. Uh that generally pays for itself in the long run. Um so I don't know that spending whatever the amount is, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars on a study when we could be diverting that money to um actually fixing the problems that we know of uh makes a lot of sense. Uh again, I'm not saying I would vote against uh the study. I'm just giving you my preliminary view. And then with respect to, you know, speed, I I I I I personally, I I don't know that we need anyone um to help us on that. I do uh I'm gonna be uh uh in favor of lower speed limits as opposed to higher. I'd be supportive of thirty. I'd even be supportive of twenty five. Um and it's just about enforcement, but I I I know we've gone to the system of, you know, having different speeds in different areas. I'm trying to simplify it candidly uh and just have one uniform uh speed limit. And again, I'm going to be in favor of lower speeds. Um you are not saving that much time. Let's just pick a house going from Claudio's house on one side of the park to the front gate by going five miles an hour faster. You are just not saving time, but you are pe- putting people's lives at risk. And we have a community where people walk their dogs. We have uh runners. I'd be one of them. And I got to tell you guys, like, I was on the road the other day. I should have taken down a license plate number. I I was running down Tuxedo Road um from the lake towards the racetrack. And either this person didn't see me or just didn't care. Uh and I I had to wave my hands at the last minute to get their attention. Um so, and by the way, driving too fast and either not paying attention or not caring about uh the fact that I was running uh right a- a- along the side of the road. So um I'm, like, I do run these roads, and I know other people walk them. I'm whenever my kids go out, uh I'm I'm concerned. So uh I'm a big fan. We 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 these are not, these are, these roads are not like roads outside the park. People walk on them. We have very, very few places to jump for cover, right? Causeway, perfect example. And by the way, we've had two accidents. We've had two cars go uh from the causeway into the lake. I I just don't even know how that's possible. We're like, we need to fix this, and we know how to fix it. So anyway, that was a little bit of a ramble. I apologize. I don't think we need a study. I think we just need to fix the issues.
Thank you, trustee Sher. I'm gonna now turn to uh the village attorney. Jared, are you there? Uh you can unmute him.
Yes, mayor.
Jared, when this subject first came up, it was your recommendation.
I I I I, to the extent that you're talking, you're going to raise my recommendation, my recommendation is that we discuss that in executive session.
With respect to a traffic safety study?
With with respect to to uh what what my recommendation might have been, I'm just cautioning, it could be attorney-client communication, and I don't want to waive it.
Then we will, we will take up, we will take up uh the issue of the traffic safety study uh as part of attorney-client discussions in executive session. And we'll move on to the next item. Okay, uh as I mentioned earlier, as you can see from this agenda, we we s- we we spend money as as expenses come up, like the repair of of Jeff's uh heavy-duty truck, eighteen thousand dollars, or or the the leak on a coma road, which I was privy to because I live on a coma road, or the police generator, which failed during the blackout several weeks ago and meant that the police had no phone, no computer, were essentially as dark as the rest of the people who were affected. These major capital expenses have to be considered as a long-term project. We need a capital planning committee, and it's the suggestion of both the deputy mayor and trustee Sher that we set up a capital planning committee to discuss how the various departments intend to spend money in the future on the projects that need to be done to keep this village the way, you know, in 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 the manner and 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 operating the way it should operate, whether it be roads or sewer or or equipment that the departments have, the police department equipment, its vehicles, the DPW's vehicles, the the paving of the roads, the water plant, the sewer plant. We need a long-term view, as suggested by the deputy mayor and the trustee. So I am proposing that we create a committee, a a capital planning committee, which will contain uh two of the members will be the trustees, the deputy mayor, and trustee Sher, if he wishes to join the committee, but we need three members of the public. And I am asking those of you with planning experience, with financial experience, that would like to dedicate some of your time to assisting the village in in putting forward a five-year plan, uh looking at the future economically, financially, uh rather than day at a time, which is essentially what we're doing now, as problems come up. It your your input would be greatly appreciated. So if anyone out there who's listening, and I'll follow it up with a a message is interested in serving on this committee, we would love to have you. Uh anything else you'd like to add to that, deputy mayor?
The only thing is that I know, and John might remember, at least ten, fifteen years ago, spreadsheet was developed, and it may have been updated, that had, you know, short-term, medium-term, long-term projects, and Jeff, you might remember.
I don't remember it, yeah.
Yeah.
I know, I know that there have been that whole project feat before, but I haven't been
There is a one, there's a whole comprehensive one.
So we can kind of use that as a basis and have
Over that years ago, when they started it, when Maureen right was in chief. So we have, we have a whole list of all the capital improvements
Yeah.
They went through whatever, five years ago or something like that.
So I think that's a good basis, and the department head's input is, you know, critical for all of this. They know the equipment that has a certain life left to it. So I'm obviously all in favor and looking forward to that.
Okay. And trustee Sher, would you be so good as to join that committee?
Uh I I would love to. I think, as I told you, I think this is critical. And it's uh yes, I'd be happy to. Uh this is, yes.
So um we we will, we will, we will get the committee together. Again, we're looking for public input. We'd like at least three, we'd like a committee of five, and we'd like three people to volunteer their time. And those people should have some experience in finance and city planning and something that would permit them to contribute to uh putting together a five-year plan with de- deputy mayor Lindsay and trustee Sher. Um and so I don't believe we need a resolution for that. It's an informal ad hoc committee. Uh it's not statutory, so we can move on. Um the next item is renewal of dental plan and medical insurance plan MVP. Elizabeth, would you like to just say a few words on that?
Well, you know what? What I had intended to do was put together some numbers because last month we, it was raised, and I had percentage increases. And I thought it would be better to, it was tabled to this month, and I was supposed to get some numbers together, and I actually didn't have time to do it. We don't have to renew this until June, so we do have some time. So I um beg the board's patience, and maybe we can revisit this in May. Is that okay?
Uh April?
April, yes, thank you.
All right, we'll table this until April. Thank you, Elizabeth. Okay, next item, F amend resolution number zero six two six dash eleven from June twenty sixth twenty twenty-three to reference the village of Tuxedo. So uh before I took office in the the prior administration, apparently, and correct me if I'm wrong, Elizabeth, there was an annexation of some parcels from the town of Tuxedo into the village of Tuxedo Park. And documents were prepared for filing with the Orange County Department of Real Estate. And those documents, which Elizabeth attempted to file within the last week or so, were rejected for one reason. And that rejection is because the town of Tuxedo is technically now, based on the consolidation vote, the town slash village of Tuxedo. It's a consolidated community. The town took that action, and the proper term for the proper term for the entity, the municipality, is town slash village of Tuxedo. And this resolution is designed to permit the documents to be changed from referencing the town of Tuxedo to the town slash village of Tuxedo so that Orange County will accept the filing of these documents. Does anybody have any questions for Elizabeth on this one?
Well, here it says you're referencing the village of Tuxedo. Are you, you're going to change it to the town slash village? Just in
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Okay, thanks.
But the, the original resolution just said town of Tuxedo, and then it referred to the village as in the village of Tuxedo Park. And Goshen said, no, it's the village of Tuxedo, not the town. But I thought to myself, people, I think, generally think of it as the town of Tuxedo. It may be technically the village of Tuxedo, but I think most of us think of it as the town of Tuxedo. So I contacted Goshen and I said, is it okay if we write town slash village of Tuxedo? And they said that was okay. So we're gonna change all references of the town of Tuxedo to town slash village and all references of the village of, just the village to the village of Tuxedo Park, just to make it clear what we're talking about. I hope that made sense.
Okay, so let me make a motion on this one. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees approve to amend resolution zero-six-twenty-six-eleven so that all references to the town of Tuxedo are town slash village of Tuxedo and all references to the village of Tuxedo Park are changed from village to village of Tuxedo Park. And I will make that motion. Do I have a second? So, excuse me, second by trustee Shaw? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Passes five-zero unanimously. Okay, we, we have back on the agenda, I think this is the third or fourth time, website accessibility discussion. Elizabeth, are we gonna deal with that today or are we gonna let that one go again?
Well, it depends if the board, if I think I sent something out to the board members. What they're asking is they're, they're sending us a link so that you can see the presentation that they prepared. And I think it basically means that somebody who can't see would be able to hear descriptions of things and better, be able to better navigate the website.
Would we be able to view that link on our own time?
Yes, I think I sent you an email that has the link.
Okay, all right. Has, has anyone had the chance to look at it? Okay. We'll, we'll, we'll table this again and I would ask that every member of the board take a look at that link. And so we educate ourselves and we can finally get this item taken care of. Now we move on to new business. And the first item is a resolution to approve introductory law number one, twenty-two-four landscaper licensing. And I will make the following motion. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees adopt local law number one of twenty-two-four landscaper licensing. Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Second. Now discussion. Starting with the deputy mayor.
Okay, well, as was expressed so well in the letter that Jim had read, as well as comments by other residents. I mean, what residents do as far as landscaping and excessive pre-work and free removal, I should say, on their properties affects the watershed of our reservoir. And so this licensing law just makes landscaping business owners accountable for making their employees aware of the code, the existing code, which is remaining in place. And make sure that their employees abide by the code. And, but I do also agree, as was expressed tonight, that a very good education outreach for both landscapers and residents would be very helpful so their, so the residents understand what we're trying to do to protect the reservoir and the watershed. And the landscaper, there won't be any contention between those, the landscapers and the residents. I, I, I think it's, it's a simple registration really, to get a license. It's not going to be a financial burden. And I, I think it's very important because of the reservoir, the health of the reservoir, and making people aware that we're all in the watershed and what we do on our own properties affects the watershed and affects the reservoir.
Thank you. Trustee Brooke.
Yeah, there has never been any evidence that the reservoir is, is at risk of practices. Second of all, as, as Jim Hay said, you want to create a partnership. This is, this is not a partnership. This is a set of laws that can be enforced. I find it best to talk to people, right? I don't think there are any water quality issues. I buy into Sally's comment that it's a, you know, additional pointless thing. It doesn't deal with the fact that somebody clears trails or some kid cuts lawns. I am personally against a, a law that addresses a problem that doesn't exist.
Thank you. Trustee Shaw.
I agree with Paul. I, I, I mean, at the end of the day, you need to have a conversation. I think education, educating the property owners, educating the landscapers is much more in keeping as far as, you know, a community as opposed to another law and, and something that is going to, I think, you know, I think honestly, as Sally said, you're gonna have people who just don't want to do business in Tuxedo Park because you're adding another hurdle. And so it takes away from the residents, the, the choices. And, and I think, you know, we, education is a way to do it, number one, for both sides. So I think it's, I don't think we need any new stuff, laws here. And and then I think also, I mean, I'm definitely going to vote against this because I, I think it's not worthwhile. And I think unfortunately also, I don't recall that there was an email sent to the whole village asking for their comments on this law like you sent out for the dogs and, and the, the Sunday thing. And I don't think that, that it's fair. I think if you're gonna make a law like that, everybody should have a chance to do it. I mean, in fact, I know that someone had dinner with someone on the list on the committee or whatever, that letter. And it was never discussed that this was going to be a law. So to me, it seems a little, you know, underhanded. And anyway, I would vote against it, but I think all of the residents should have an option to send their comments in.
Trustee Sher.
I think this is, first of all, I'm, I'm supportive of licensing. And I don't think we're creating new laws. We're not creating new bureaucracy. Give me a second, please. I think this is simply making the landscape contractors responsible for their actions. And people, when you sign on a piece of paper that you are, you are agreeing to abide by our laws that currently exist, you think long and hard before you go and violate those. And it's really, we've talked about enforcement. Just the mere fact that you have a chance of being kicked out of the park will make you think long and hard. As it is right now, we talk about educating the landowners. That's great. We should do it. But there's no responsibility. What happens if it's violated? We're gonna kick people out of the park? We're gonna kick, kick people off their properties? We have no right to do that. There's no real consequences. This actually improves enforcement. And people have talked about tax burden. There is no tax burden to residents. What we're talking about here is a de minimis fee. The fee, this is, as the mayor said, is not a revenue enhancing strategy. The fee will be de minimis. The proposed application for, which is still draft, I think, Mayor, you said it, you had it at the back of the room for people who wanted to take a look at it. It's fairly straightforward. All you're saying is, I agree to abide by the laws that are currently in place in the village of Tuxedo Park. This doesn't apply to a homeowner like Sally, who was gonna, you know, do her own gardening. This isn't gonna apply to a nephew or a kid that you're, are, are paying. This is, this is for the professional landscape contractors. And again, I, I just, I don't see the burden. I think this is enforcement. This will help us to protect and properly enforce the rules that we currently have in place. So, I'm supportive.
The comment Ryan made and Sally made is the responsibility for for this is the property owner. Right? You know, landscapers tend to do what the property only says. Right? So, so where have there been problems?
That's the problem. We don't know. I don't know what my landscape, I, I don't know what my contractor is putting on my plants and on my lawn. I don't know if it complies or doesn't comply.
Ask. That's why you educate. That's you educate the homeowner and you
But think about it. I, thank you, Tink. I appreciate that. I've been in this community now for thirteen years. Okay, I can ask. I can get a response that I can either just take at face value or verify. But if that party, in this case, Bill Fairclough, has signed a piece of paper that says that if he violates our laws and regulations, that he can get kicked out of the park, I guarantee you, he's gonna think long and hard before he goes and tries to make my grass look greener by violating those rules and regulations. Right now, as it is, I can ask him. I can educate myself. I have no way of verifying.
I agree that signing your name to a paper, you know, gives you pause and as a business owner and will make sure that you educate your employees and make sure that you understand the code. And if the property owner asks you to do something that's not in the code, you explain to them and, and at the same time, we're educating the public as, as to why we're doing this. It's all about protecting our watershed and our reservoir.
By the way, it protects from that situation where a property owner is asking a landscaper to do something they shouldn't be doing. It gives the landscape contractor the ability to say, I'm not allowed to do that. I'm putting my business at risk.
And then where do you stop?
What does that mean?
Well, you're gonna have Amazon sign something that if their people are speeding, they need a, they need a a permit to deliver in Tuxedo Park and if
No, we just, we'll just give them the speeding ticket. We're just giving them a speeding ticket. We just enforce the laws.
Yeah, what do you stop with electricians, with plumbers, with, I mean, why are you picking on one group of people that come here?
Because it has such a, hold on. The, electricians. First of all, this affects our watershed. It does. And like, what, whatever we're putting on our properties will wash into the lakes. It just does. Okay? An electrician has to be licensed. They're already licensed. That's separate and apart from anything we're doing. So when you say, where does it stop? What are the concrete examples of what I think you're worried about, which is bureaucratic overreach? I don't know where else we would go from here. This is, this is, this is dealing with a very specific problem that we have, which is the quality of the water in the lake.
But let me amend what you said. I mean, we have a difference of opinion. And it's not that we're dealing with a problem. You are dealing with a threat of a problem which doesn't exist.
I disagree with that. We have, we have algae blooms every year.
Okay, so let me suggest you have a sense of where the board is. It looks to be a three-two vote. Mr. Mayor, I assume something comes up at the next meeting when we look at the actual wording of the rule.
When you say the wording of the rule, the, I put, I put forward, chapter sixty-seven was drafted. It's landscapers. It's, it's been circulated. It's available online and we are voting to either adopt chapter sixty-seven and all the terms within it, or we are, or we are going to reject it. This is, we're voting now. And, and I, I call the question with respect to the adoption of chapter sixty-seven, captioned landscapers. And I would ask the, the board to vote, starting with the deputy mayor, yea or nay?
Yea.
Trustee Brooke?
Nay.
Trustee Shaw?
Nay, and I don't think you gave the public enough time to review this law. I think that the residents need to have a time to review the law and comment. Just like you said, for the dogs and the Sunday delivery, you sent out a note for everybody to comment. I think that needs to be done that way. I think that's the responsibility of the board to represent the residents. And I don't think they've been represented. I don't think that three people on this board should decide without hearing on something that is much more important than a dog or a Sunday delivery. I, I just think it's wrong.
This was noticed to the public. This was discussed at prior board meetings. This legislation was crafted by the village attorney. And we are in the process of voting yea or nay on it. Trustee, trustee Sherer.
Okay, you don't need, I'm not finished, okay? I know you'd like to cut me off. It's not, I'm, we're, this is a serious thing. And I, I just don't understand why, what is the urgency of voting on this tonight without sending out an, an email to all the residents and say, because there are a lot of people who are not aware of this, to just say, please send your comments to the Board of Trustees. What's the big deal if you wait one more meeting? I don't think it's a big deal. I think you need to have the residents opine on this. This is, this is a law and
There are plenty, there are plenty of local laws that have been, that have been addressed by prior boards where surveys were not conducted, where discussion was held, where public hearings were done, and that's the process we're using tonight.
But why on this one, but not on the dogs?
Season starts and we want these landscapers
So call a special meeting or something, but I just think it's wrong not to let the residents opine on this.
We have a vote. If you suggest, you've gotta be somewhere to deal with it, but let's get on with the rest of the agenda. At this point, we're two and two.
Trustee, I haven't voted yet. Trustee Sher, yea or nay?
I'm in support.
I guess that's, I'll take that as a yea.
Oh, yes, yes. It's a yea.
Thank you. And, and the mayor votes yea. The resolution passes three to two.
And I, I just have one more comment.
Law is adopted.
Which we will discuss. I want to find out if the village has the authority to issue restricted licenses, but we'll ask Jared that in, in executive session.
Okay, that's fine. All right. Subject, subject to the requirements of filing, the local law with the Secretary of State, the law, the law is adopted and will be effective pursuant to New York state law under the timeframe set forth. Jared, do you know what the timeframe is, by the way? Once a village, a local law is passed?
It, it, it gets submitted to the, the New York State Department of State and then it'll be, I think it's thirty days or so, but I'll confirm that, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, next, next item on the agenda is the change of the May Board of Trustees meeting from May fifteenth to May twenty-second. New York, the New York Conference of Mayors is having their annual meeting in Bolton Landing. And the meeting starts on the fifteenth of May and runs to the seventeenth. I intend to attend the meeting and Deputy Mayor Lindsay has indicated she also intends to attend that meeting. And as a result, I'm requesting that the board agree to postpone our May meeting from the fifteenth, one week to May twenty-second. I will make the resolution and then we can discuss it. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees change the regularly scheduled May fifteenth, twenty-two-four Board of Trustees meeting to May twenty-second. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Deputy Mayor seconds. Any discussion on that? Anybody have a problem or conflict?
I'm, I'm fine with it.
All right. Thank you all very much. I appreciate this. All right. Thank you all very much. I appreciate this. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Uh, five, nothing. It carries, uh, the May meeting will be on the twenty-second of May.
Um, I'm sorry, Mayor, may I just say something?
Yeah.
Uh, Sally's had her hand raised to make a comment.
Sally, is that it?
Comment? Okay, uh, we, we've allowed people to comment out of turn, so please allow her to speak.
May have been accidental, who knows? Sally? I, I think we just move on.
Oh, no, hello?
Oh, hey Sally. There she is.
Oh, hi. No, it wasn't accidental, but I'm afraid that it's, it's now not timely. I, I was just really confused by one thing, Josh, that you said that when the landowner knew what kind of fertilizer to put on, but the, but the landscaper didn't and he would do what he wanted, that we had, you had no way of verifying. Well, now, what's the difference? He knows, but who has, who is going to verify? Who has a way of verifying? Nothing has really changed unless someone creeped around and looked at all the bags.
No, I, so I agree with you, Sally. Nothing's changed except it shifted the responsibility from a landowner who ultimately has, there are really no consequences, right? To the landscape contractor, who, I agree, no one's gonna be snooping around. But if it's found out somehow that the landscape contractor has used a banned substance, their entire business is at risk. And so that's gonna make that, that it will make that party think really long and hard before they go and use a banned substance. That's the point. All we're doing is shifting the liability and holding someone accountable that we can actually hold accountable.
Well, usually it's the boss who's accountable in the end, but now, look, you've, you've already made your vote, but I really hope that you're gonna line up Bill Fl- Flare- Fairclough to to uh maintain the trails because he will have a license. And I'm sure my guy, Adilio, who would charge about half will not have a license because he can't get one for one or two days. So anyhow, we'll deal with that.
In fair, in fairness, Sally, I mean, I think you said earlier, you would ask him. I would encourage you to, once this form is finalized, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it or not. It's, it's not, it's, it's not, it's not a complicated form to fill out and the fee will be insignificant.
But he'll have to go, he'll have to spend from eight to ten because no one's there at eight to go and get his license for the one day of work.
So we can do this on.
I'm there at eight.
Yep. Go ahead, Elizabeth. And we can do it online as well.
Yeah, I don't know if he can do that, but anyhow, look, uh, this is, I'm, I'm sorry to take the time. I really am.
But no, we, we wanna hear from you, Sally, so uh, it's, it's fine.
But I, I'm, I'm, I am disappointed because I just think it's gonna complicate things for some of us. Um, and we don't need to make life more difficult to live in Tuxedo Park, I don't think, but I'm afraid. This is just one more thing. So.
Respond to what uh Trustee Brook suggested, that the lake doesn't have any problems. The lake does have problems. Now, what you have to remember is these watershed changes take a long time to affect the lake. Correcting them also takes a long time. The lake manager for years now has been measuring the amount of phosphate in our lake and that has been rising. And one of the important consequences of that is that it, of course, produces more plant material. That plant material sinks down and when the lake stratifies in the summertime, that deeper water is not mixing up to the surface and being aerated. As a consequence, the water becomes anoxic, no oxygen. So, oh, now wait, just let me finish. That, that ox- that no oxygen layer in August and September is rising and it's approaching the water intake pipe. If it reaches the water intake pipe, it will foul the wa- water that we're putting in, into our tanks. So that's a serious problem. There, there are other serious problems I'm not gonna.
Thank you, Professor. Okay, all right. Uh, item number C, authorize the mayor to sign municipal advisor services agreement with Munistat for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Munistat provides the paperwork for our outstanding bonds, which by statute has, has to be prepared and filed because we don't want the bonds to be called prematurely. Um, is that correct, Deputy Mayor? So I would, uh, I would make the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees authorize Mayor Citron to sign the service agreement with Munistat for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by the deputy mayor. All in favor? Oh, discussion, I'm sorry, yeah.
Did you have a question?
No, no, just.
A discussion, yeah. Anybody wanna talk about this? No? Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Josh?
Uh, aye, sorry.
That was carried unanimously. All right. Uh, discussion of generator for police booth. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, the, there was electrical outage due to a transformer explosion near the train station and the uh, the police booth and the lodge and they keep all lost power. Uh, the officers couldn't open the gate uh because there was no power and they had to revert to uh using the exit lane for two-way traffic with one officer in the dark. I was down there directing traffic, incoming, outgoing, incoming, outgoing. It was ridiculous. The police need electricity and they need a working generator. The generator that is there was donated to the police booth several years ago by a resident. In fact, more than several years ago. If you visit it and I invite you to take a look, it's located in the parking lot on the town side of, of the lodge. Uh, it looks like a contraption made from a steampunk company. Uh, it's, it looks, it's just shocking and it doesn't work and we have to replace it. Because of the expense involved, we received one proposal from one uh company, thirty-five thousand dollars uh to install for a fifty kilowatt generator, which they, which is, which would service all three buildings. We'll have to RFP this. So I just want everybody to know that I think it's a priority that we replace this generator with a working one so that the police are available to do their job twenty-four seven in, in, in the event of another power failure. Uh, item E, um, Jeff has left, but they have two heavy-duty diesel trucks, one of which uh had engine problems. It was from two thousand and, it was, it was a model two thousand and thirteen truck. So it was eleven years old with very low mileage, thirty, thirty-three thousand. But those thirty-three thousand miles were heavy load miles and uh they need two trucks. And uh I took a survey and uh Trustee Brook and Trustee Sharer uh agreed with me that we should approve that repair. And uh, this is a retroactive uh resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees authorize the repair of the DPW truck for eighteen thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents. I make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Brook. Any discussion about this repair? It's, it's really part of the capital improvement. We gotta look at our vehicles and decide whether they're useful, whether we need them. We have a, a, a medium-duty truck that the DPW says is brand new and they can barely use it. It's good for salting and it's good for pulling equipment, but not good for carrying asphalt and other heavy material they need to distribute around the village. So why we bought this truck, I don't know, but it was, according to Jeff, the wrong, uh, the wrong um type of truck. They needed a heavy-duty truck. They bought a medium truck. So that's part of the capital plan for the future. So all in favor of authorizing retroactively this repair, please say aye.
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 Aye. And then can we have a little, uh, do you, do you know anything more about this truck than just?
The repair?
Well, the, the, that is a new truck and that it's not working or whatever. Uh, do you, do you have anything?
We'll have, we'll have Jeff, we'll have, uh, we'll have Jeff talk to us about the use of that med- medium-duty truck at the next meeting. He can, he can include that in his superintendent's um presentation. All right, um, renewal of the Weewaw Fishing Club lease, um, the president of the.
I'm sorry, uh, Mayor, did we finish the vote on that?
Yeah.
No, Josh didn't.
I, I didn't have, I didn't have a chance. I, I, I vote in favor.
Okay.
Thank you. So it was all in favor? I'm sorry.
Trustee Shaw, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, it's five, nothing for.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm trying to move quickly. Uh, Tom Fuller of the Fishing Club got in touch with me on Thursday of, of last week or and he said that they'd like to renew the lease. Uh, it's called the Weewaw Fishing Club because they do fishing in the Weewaw only. They keep their boats by the DPW shed. Um, they've been doing it for years. Uh, I uh prepared a, a new lease. It's for one year. Uh, I increased the uh lease from uh twelve hundred and fifty dollars as a, as a payment to fifteen hundred dollars. So a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar increase. I kept the mill foil, um, the mill foil fee at seven hundred and fifty. The club agreed to that. We had one dispute with respect to the lease and that involved the issue of ID cards. I, I just wanna let the board know that I felt that ID cards issued to members were appropriate because at this point with an automatic gate, uh, any vehicle that's registered to a fishing club member can enter without being checked by the police. However, simply because the vehicle is registered doesn't mean all the occupants are members of the fishing club. And since the membership is limited to sixty-five uh non-village residents, I thought it was important that every re- every member have an ID card to show to a police officer or any enforcement officer to ensure that only members of the fishing club use the, uh, use the facilities. In addition, um, the other members include all village employees are entitled to join as well as um members of the ambulance corps and the volunteer fire department who've put in a certain number of service hours. I'm, I think it's, I'm not quite sure what that is. That continues from last year. And finally, um, uh, the other members, again, any village resident is free to join. However, the membership is capped at sixty-five for non-village residents. So um, uh, I would make a motion and we can talk about it, that we renew the lease with the Weewaw Fishing Club. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion of that?
How did you resolve the ID issue?
They agreed to uh provide ID cards for every member. Okay, yeah, I felt that was, that was kind of important because with this automatic gate, you don't know who's coming in. So the officer should be able to say, show, show me your papers, please, so to speak. All, um, any other discussion about the renewal of the Weewaw Fishing Club lease? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Unanimous, five, zero.
And, and I'm sorry, the second for that came from who? Is that?
Trustee Shaw.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, now, uh, I turn the floor over to Deputy Mayor Lindsay for an update on the community choice aggregation, the renewable or green energy program.
Yeah, well, we'll just focusing on the community choice aggregation program right now. It was about two years ago that we had public hearings, discussions. Uh, we adopted the law uh approving this program and we also appointed Jewel Energy, that's J O U L E, uh, energy as the administrator of the program. And the reason why we weren't able to move forward is that the prices in the market were unstable. And uh we have learned uh in the last month, they contacted us to say that there's a, a good chance that the market is stable enough to move forward with the program. These will be for, it's like a bulk buying program of electricity. We're in a consortium with other municipalities. Uh, the total accounts are fifteen thousand electricity accounts. And um therefore we have better uh ability to get good numbers when we, when the official RFP goes out. And it will, we, what, so what we'll, what we will do is uh get some indicative pricing on March twenty-seventh from the bidders and April eleventh, we'll get final pricing at which point in time we'll have to move pretty quickly. I'm not sure exactly how quickly uh to uh to decide whether that pricing is and which terms we want. Yeah, there'll be all different terms, anywhere from twelve months to thirty-six months. Uh, there's different types of pricing and uh I will be sending more information after the March twenty-seventh meeting to the board when we have indicative pricing.
Now, uh, let's, let me just so the pu- so the public is aware. This would mean that uh all uh customers here in the village would participate in the program with an opt-out provision if they choose not to. Is, is that correct? In other words, if you wanna continue to receive fossil fuel-generated electricity, uh, you opt out. Uh, so that, that, and we will make that quite clear. It's, it's easy, it's free. You can opt out at any time, actually. You can join the program and decide you don't like the, 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 the cost. The cost is not uh less than fossil fuel-generated electricity. You can opt out at any time, but it is an opt-out requirement. Otherwise, you won't be part of the, of the renewable energy program. Did you say that's correct, Professor?
I'm not a professor.
Okay.
Well, the one thing is that uh they, uh, just without getting too much into the weeds, uh, you have to be an eligible um account, meaning that you haven't already opted into a renewable uh energy supplier as a which is an energy supply company and um which are out there, you know, there's uh
Next amp.
Next amp. Uh, there's several suppliers. And so if you already are getting your renewable, then you're not eligible. But if you look, i- i- you look at your contract and you decide that the pricing that is offered to the municipality here is more advantageous, you can, you can choose to join.
Okay, great. All right, thank you for that update. Uh, things will move rather quickly on that at this point.
Yes.
Okay, uh, next item on the agenda, uh, our Associate Justice Roundtree has uh was sworn in um back in last year. But there is an Office of Court Administration requirement that all new village and town justices take a course. Um, and it's a, it's a two or three-day course. Sometimes it's given in Syracuse, sometimes it's given in Albany. Justice Roundtree attended that course and incurred expenses uh for hotel meals, transportation to and from, I think it was Albany, but I'm not sure, uh, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-eight cents. I believe she supplied the, the clerk treasurer with receipts and the num- that's how they reached the uh, the number of four hundred and seventy-five ninety-eight for which she should receive reimbursement. She's in an unsalaried position. She expended the money for the benefit of the village. She's now fully certified as a, as a justice of the village. And I would make a motion that we reimburse her the four hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-eight cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Brook. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. Uh, the next item is, is Elizabeth's item, but it actually is for the benefit of the trustees. It is allowing for approval of monthly report detailing expenses. Elizabeth, would you please explain to the trustees the, the new method we'd like to institute for, for voucher signing?
Right, so um in the, what we have been doing until now is um getting three trustee signatures on each voucher and the voucher is the paperwork that accompanies every bill and it shows uh, gives you the charge code um and the department and there's always a department head that signs it. And then you have three trustee signatures and that's what we've used to authorize payment. But um we have found out that other municipalities don't do this. I asked our accountants if we have to do it and they said, not really. They said that it's always been done here and that's why we always do it. And I also contacted the uh State Comptroller's Office and they also said it, we don't need three trustee signatures on each voucher. They said um that, you know, and I said, if we have a report that details all of the expenses, would it be sufficient to have this trustee signatures on that report? And they said it would be. So this would obviously be easier for the trustees. I've gone through um each of the reports and all of the uh vouchers. I've gone through, um, each of the reports and all of the vouchers are there. And, um, they just, you know, it's, so you still have them to look at. Many of them are routine, like the telephone bills, things like that. Um, but if there's anything you have a question about, you can look up the, get the detail from the, um, paperwork that's on the table.
I consider this major progress. Well done.
Thank you.
Do we, do we need a resolution?
Michelle's idea.
Do we actually need a resolution on this, Elizabeth, or can you just-
I, I don't know, I'm not sure about it.
No, no resolution.
I don't think we need a resolution. You can just institute the new policy starting, uh, next month or later this month. And the trustees will sign one sheet of paper and review the bills as they see fit.
Well, this can start today.
Okay, start today, all right. That should make the trustees very happy.
Right.
Okay, move on to the next one. Uh, accept New England Aquatic Services bid on diver harvesting proposal. Trustee Sher, would you like to address that briefly?
I'm sorry, with the, the proposal, um, I guess I should be, as, uh, I'm not sure I'm prepared for that, though, unfortunately.
Um, well, and I-
Do you have it in front of you? Are you able to do that?
It's, it's on the website. I mean, it's, you can look at it there, and I should have sent it to you, and I apologize, I really do. I sent it to AJ, and I thought, because I thought we would get his input first. And I haven't, excuse me, I haven't heard back from him. I'm, I apologize, I should have just sent it to you as well as him. So my thought was we could approve it conditionally, uh, you know, it was, it was the idea that Joshua-
It was the, it was the only proposal we got. It's a service that we require. Um, I, I would propose, Mayor, that we, uh, approve it conditional, uh, uh, on condition that we get AJ's, uh, uh, sign off on it.
Okay, that's, I'll make that motion. Do you resolve that we, that the Board of Trustees accept New England Aquatic Services bid on diver harvesting proposal, subject to the consent of the, uh, uh, Lakes Ma- the Lakes Manager, uh, AJ Reyes? Uh, do I have a second on that? Do you second that, Josh?
Yes, second.
Second, okay. Uh, any discussion on this?
No.
No? Okay. Uh, all in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Why did I?
Carried unanimously, Elizabeth. Next item, uh, once a year, we do onsite shredding. Uh, Elizabeth has documents she needs to shred, and she makes the shredding company available to residents as well. Uh, she's picked a date of April ninth, between one-thirty PM and two-thirty PM. That doesn't seem like a, a long period of time. Is that, is that a sufficient one hour?
Oh, it's quite sufficient, it is. It only takes them about five seconds to shred a box, they just dump it in. So, um, and, and I, you know, my boxes are all lined up, ready to go, they just put it in.
Do you know how much approximately that would cost the, the village?
Um, how much that would, I'm sorry, just repeat your question?
Yeah, uh, we have to pay for that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't put the cost, six hundred, I'm sorry.
Thank you, okay, we'll include that, okay. So I move, we approve onsite shredding on April ninth from one-thirty PM to two-thirty PM for the cost of six hundred dollars, uh, for both village records, uh, that the clerk believes, uh, should be shredded as well as open to all residents that need, uh, documents shredded. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Brooke, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous, five, zero. Okay.
Aye.
Um, the Tuxedo Club annual fireworks display. Um, I, I owe, I owe the public an apology with respect to the, uh, private fireworks display that took place on March first. The Board of Trustees had agreed that we would notify the village the day before, and that agreement was reached on, uh, February eighth. And, and I dropped the ball, I completely forgot. And, uh, residents did not receive notification, and that's my fault. And I've apologized to various residents for that. And I, I am sorry because people were not aware, once the fireworks started, they were startled. Um, and, uh, I, I, again, I'm s- I'm sorry about that, and I accept responsibility for that. Um, also, uh, in co- in coordination with, with the decision to have a private fireworks display, I've sent several articles to the Lakes Manager, AJ Reyes. Uh, professional articles are written by academics with respect to the issue of heavy metals from fireworks displays that fall into the water and essentially pollute the water. I've asked, uh, AJ to read those articles and any others he may have access to and to give us his opinion, and I have not heard back from him. Give us his opinion as to whether, in fact, these fireworks displays, whether it's the club display, which is huge, or the smaller one we had on March first, uh, has an effect on water quality. Because obviously, if it does, that would, um, that would, um, give us some reason for perhaps not approving more than one fireworks display a year, which is the traditional Tuxedo Club fireworks display. So as soon as I hear back from him, I sent those to him a week or so ago. Uh, I will share that with the board, and we can, we can reach a consensus on whether we should continue to permit private fireworks displays, uh, out of the Tuxedo Club, excluding the, the annual one on July fourth. So with respect to the, um, annual fireworks display, I move that we approve the Tuxedo Club's annual fireworks display for July fourth. Do I have a second?
Second. I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, it doesn't say here, it just says annual fireworks display. It doesn't specify the July fourth holiday, I mean-
Let's, let's put that in the resolution.
Yes, let's do that.
I just said that.
Oh, you did?
I did, I did, yeah, no, I said for July fourth.
Okay, okay.
That specifies it. The resolution will state, we approve it for July fourth.
For the holiday of July fourth, because it doesn't happen on July-
That's true, okay, for the holiday of July fourth. Um, uh, there was a second from Trustee Shaw, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
So, they, I'm sorry, there was a li- little, um, mistake with the agenda because their, uh, their request is for two dates. And I just, I, I just made a mistake. So it's, um, for July fourth and for the end of the summer, August thirty-first, and that's in the resolution, I mean.
Well, how about we approve July fourth, and we wait to see what AJ says about a second?
Oh, okay, was that what your, was that what you had led to? I'm sorry, I wasn't completely sure.
Based on what I read, maybe we should-
Okay.
Should consider the second display before we approve it. I mean, we're not gonna, we're not gonna disappoint everyone on July fourth or whatever day it's observed. Okay, so it's approval for July fourth only, okay?
Okay. Perfect.
Okay, um, our clerk treasurer, uh, uh, deserves congratulations because she received her notary public license. And, uh, we're very happy because she'll be able to notarize all the signatures of the contractors when they come in to sign the license application. And, uh, she would like to take an online class for notaries. I think the fee is, what, sixty bucks?
Yes.
Sixty dollars. So I would move that the clerk, uh, Elizabeth Doherty, be authorized to attend an online class for notaries at a cost of sixty dollars. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Trustee Brooke, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, um, next we have audit of- Oh, next we have Jim, yes. Sorry, thank you. I'm reading from three different agendas. Yes, uh, we have an added item on the agenda, uh-
Good, beautiful.
This would be very short.
Go ahead.
Uh, because I know it's a long meeting and you have a lot, uh, to do. But I, I submitted to you, uh, some weeks ago, an annual report that John and I put together, yes?
I can't, I'm not sure people can hear you unless, if you're not speaking.
It might be better if Jim just keeps speaking.
Oh, okay, can you hear? Yeah, 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 right, okay, there you go.
So, the annual report covers a lot of things, and there's, there's a lot of words in it, and, and, and you've had it for a while. We, you may or may not have read it. Uh, but in the interest of long-term planning, which you're in, in the process of doing, and this year's budget, uh, I wanted to be sure that at least you considered some of the things that we've been doing. Doing the inventory of greenhouse gas emissions for all the buildings, all the generators, all the vehicles in the park, and the greenhouse gas emissions generated by the electricity that we use in the municipal government. We were able to calculate the total greenhouse gas emissions from village government operations. And so what John and I put together here, it, which I've given you a copy of, and you have that, as well as the annual report. But it's a list of all the buildings, list of the vehicles, and it read suggestions by us. That includes Jeff and the former police chief and, and, and John, primarily John, of, based on the ages of facilities and the, the, the amount of greenhouse gas emissions they produce, what cuts might be made and what percentage of our total, uh, that would result in, which is the far-right column. So I'd like to turn it to John, if you have questions about the buildings and whatnot, because John's much more familiar with the building than I am. But this is just, this is just for something you can work with in thinking about how you want to do it. What we've suggested results in a forty-eight percent reduction by, uh, the end of the decade.
Thank you.
Thank you, Professor.
If, if I may, and Michelle is aware of this as be others, uh, we're currently getting, uh, pricing on redoing the heating system at the South Gate, uh, Road property. Uh, does not reflect the largest reduction in megatons, um, of reduction. But the heating system is probably over thirty years old, and the hot water tank is over twenty years old. So we think it's a good preventative maintenance measure to start with the South Gate house. Uh, we're also going to look into getting some prices at some of the other areas, and hopefully we'll present at least one or two of them during the budget process. So that's the result of Jim, uh, putting all the numbers together and along with, uh, actually having a formal list of all the properties and the age, approximate age of the heating systems and how much fuel was used.
Now, with respect to the police cars, there's been a change. The recommendation was EVs, but what we have are hybrids now, is that correct?
Right, but our baseline year, our, our baseline year is, is twenty eighteen.
Okay.
And at that time, we were all regular gasoline. We have made improvements by twenty-twenty-two.
Right.
But what our comparison will be for the twenty-thirty will be against twenty-eighteen. So it's gasoline-powered solely EV, so.
I have to say that a forty-eight percent reduction in greenhouse gas emissions is, is fantastic.
Well, you guys gotta do it.
Well, yeah, I mean, if we can get even, it, it, you know, it would be hard to get totally there, but even if we get partially there, it'll be, it'll be great. And I know that how hard it is to have put this all together. And I applaud both of you for, for doing that. It is, it's, it's a lot of work.
And, and this will be part of the five-year plan, right?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it should be.
Yeah.
And the, the community choice aggregation, which Mel, Michelle talked about, I mean, that's, that's twenty-one percent right there. So I mean, that's a really big number. All the other numbers are relatively small.
It's pretty easy to, you know, the community choice is easy, we just select it and that's it.
But that assumes, uh, no fossil fuels producing that. It has to be solar, wind, or whatever.
Hydro, right.
Hydro, yeah.
All right, thank you, thank you, Professor, okay. Um, that was an add-on, so now we move to, uh, you can, uh, move, remove the screen. We move to audit of claims, and I, I turn to, uh, the clerk treasurer for that.
Thank you. Uh, for the record, the audit of claims, um, for the month of February, this, this follows the general fund, one hundred ninety-seven thousand thirty-eight dollars. The sewer fund, twelve thousand two hundred sixty-eight dollars twenty-seven cents. And the water fund, thirty-three thousand one hundred forty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents. And I just wanted to mention that, um, we had been meeting with a former trustee who has, uh, a financial background, and he talked about how it's u- usual to have to, when you're talking about like a period of time, to go with the whole, a calendar month. So like, I had been doing, um, like, from the previous, um, board meeting to the current board meeting. But I, I kind of feel like what he says makes sense. So this rec- these order of claims are for the vouchers that were, uh, processed in the month of February. And then, and then going forward, it's always going to be on a monthly basis rather than from the previous meeting to the current meeting.
Makes sense.
So some of these overlap what we did last month, but I think that doesn't matter. You know, it's, there's nothing wrong with being approved twice. And this, going forward, they will always be the, for the whole month. And again, we will be going forward using the report that everybody will sign off on.
I will give you additional time because you don't have to do it from meeting to meeting. So it's not like this afternoon, you'd be working on it to come up with the, uh, the claims up through the, the, uh, Board of Trustees meeting. Makes your life a little bit easier, I would think.
It, it's kind of pretty much the same. It doesn't really matter if, what period you pick, you know, you just put the dates in the computer and it gives you the report. It's just that, um, uh, he mentioned that, and I thought, he's right. You do usually go month by month, not, you know, in the middle of the month, you know, mid-month to mid-month, so.
Uh, next item is also yours, budget transfer.
Wait, 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 we don't, we have to vote on that? The audit of claims?
Do we vote? We never vote.
We, we, we can, I, I'm not sure if we, you know, often we don't. I just mentioned what they are in the, because you're approving them on the sheet of paper when you sign the report.
They're not accurate, the numbers, so that's, I mean, so I don't know, because I looked through them, and there's a couple of things that need to be adjusted. So I don't know that your total numbers are correct. So I just wanted to, you know, have that, you know, because if you say one hundred ninety-seven thousand thirty-eight for the general fund, and then there are a couple of comments here, so I, I don't know how that works. I just want to make sure that's in the minutes and that, that those numbers might change when you review the vouchers and things.
Could that possibly be that she's going from, I don't know?
No, no, I was looking at this compared to the actual vouchers. So the summary compared to the voucher behind it. So that, that's all. I mean, no problem with the sewer fund, but there are a couple, just a couple of questions.
Some, some of the vouchers are a little bit confusing because some of them have, um, invoices that are another month. So if you look at the voucher, the only, in only-
Compared the voucher to what you have on the list and, like, each item, so.
I understand that, but that's what I'm trying to say. The vouchers, the, sorry, I, I thought you wanted to say something.
I just wanted to say, this is not an issue we're going to vote on. If there are discrepancies, we will deal with the discrepancies as part of the administrative process, but we're not going to do this by resolution.
No, no, which is fine, I just want to make it clear that the numbers that Elizabeth read out may not be correct.
Okay.
That's the only thing I want to-
You brought that to our attention, but that'll be, that'll be addressed administratively, not by way of resolution. Budget transfers?
I, I have no budget transfers this month.
All right, then we don't have an issue. Uh, closing comments, for those who are still left. Members of the public who wish to speak on anything that took place during the course of this meeting or any other subject, please feel free to raise your hands. We have nobody in the audience other than my wife, who will not be making any comments. Anybody? By the way, if you weren't here, you missed, uh, her cho- her oatmeal raisin cookies, which were available, but you had to come in person for those. All right, that being said, any trustees wish to comment on anything at all? Uh, Deputy Mayor?
No, thank you.
Trustee Brooke?
No.
Trustee Shaw?
No.
Trustee Sher?
No.
Okay, at this point, we are going, I make a motion that we enter executive session to discuss personnel matters, an appeal of a sewer charge, um, and, um, see what else, uh, personnel matters and an appeal of a sewer charge, and, uh, an attorney-client discussion. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor going into executive session, please say aye?
Aye.
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 Clear the room, please, no one is, no one is in the room.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Just be careful, we're still being recorded.
Sure, that's, thank you very much. Um, the items to be discussed are personnel matters and appeal of a sewer charge. And what was the last one, executive?
End of the meeting if you wish.
Okay, uh, make a motion, uh, that we adjourn the meeting, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming and, uh, giving it a lot of time tonight. Thank you for your-
Thanks, everyone, good night.
That was, take a second time, second thing?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.